So why don't we go ahead and get started. Welcome, everyone, to the one day, August 3rd work session of the Falls Church City Council. We're going to go into closed session for the next hour or so and then come back and reconvene in a joint work session with the Town Council of Vienna. So let me see if we have a motion to go into closed session. Looks like we do. Is there anything that people want to talk about or discuss or mention before we go into closed session? Okay. Upon a motion made by council member—
Connolly.
—seconded by council member—
Oliver.
—and passed by voice vote of City Council, Council wanted a closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1, discussion consideration of performance or salaries of specific public officers or appointees of any public body, annual evaluations of city manager, city attorney, and city clerk. Councilmember Baruch?
Yes.
Councilmember Connolly?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan?
Yes.
Councilmember Oliver?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Snyder?
Yeah.
Councilmember Zee?
Yes.
Councilmember Tarter? Okay. So I think we're going to retire to the Oak Room upstairs and then come back by eight o'clock. And thank you very much. Falls Church City Council has a little bit of business to take care of before we get started this evening. If you all could just take your seats for a moment or two, that would be much appreciated. I don't have a gavel. Someone took my gavel. All right, let's go ahead. Let's go ahead and do it. So why don't we go ahead and take our certification upon a motion made by council member—
Zee.
—seconded by council member—
Connolly.
—and passed by a vote of City Council, Council reconvened in open session. Councilmember Baruch?
Yes.
Councilmember Connolly?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan?
Yes.
Councilmember Oliver?
Yes.
Councilmember Snyder?
Yes.
Councilmember Zee?
Yes.
Councilmember Tarter?
Yes.
Okay, certification upon a motion made by council member—
Zee.
—and seconded by council member—
Connolly.
—and passed upon affirmative roll call vote in open session and was certified that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and only such public business matters were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting were convened were heard, discussed, or convened in the closed session or meeting by the City Council. Councilmember Baruch?
Yes.
Councilmember Connolly?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan?
Yes.
Councilmember Oliver?
Yes.
Councilmember Snyder?
Yes.
Councilmember Zee?
Yes.
Councilmember Tarter? Okay. So now we're going to go ahead and have our joint meeting. We had a little bit of business to take care of. Thank you for indulging us with that. But if we could, we're going to go down to the table and have our joint meeting with the Vienna Town Council. We're delighted you're here with us today. So if we can, why don't we go ahead and sit down for a moment or two and then we can get started. So if I can, I'd just like to take the opportunity to formally welcome you all, the Town Council of Vienna, to Falls Church. We're delighted you're all here with us today. I think this is the first time maybe this has happened, and I think it's pretty exciting to be able to spend time with you all and hopefully we can learn some things from each other and adopt some best practices and just form some nice relationships. I think some of you may know the genesis of this. This originally, or this relates to a Solarize campaign that your mayor and myself were involved in publicizing with the Friendly Challenge. Originally, one of the proposals was to have the losing mayor saying, "You are my sunshine" to the other council.
You lose the line out pretty quickly.
Yeah. I've embarrassed myself plenty in this world, but usually not on purpose. And so we decided to change it to have a dinner. And we thought it'd be a great way to get to meet people in a formal fashion and exchange ideas and maybe form some relationships. So Eden Center, which is the largest Vietnamese shopping center outside of Orange County in America, and homes of the best Vietnamese food probably in the whole United States, kindly donated the food for tonight from a place called Eden Kitchen. So we'd welcome you all to come and explore Eden Center and the rest of the businesses here in Falls Church. So we've got some great places to offer, some great restaurants and businesses. So with that, maybe we could do some brief introductions and maybe everyone could get up and get some food and we can sit down and talk about some of the things we've got on our agenda for tonight. I'll start. I'm Dave Tarter, the mayor of Falls Church.
I'm Kiri Steneki, council member.
Okay.
Town of Vienna.
Tara Bouie. Libby Colberg. Eden Calhoun, Vienna Town Council.
Joanne Burke. I'm a member of this Community Enhancement Commission, the Sustainability Committee for them.
I'm Lori Drago. I'm the mayor of the town of Vienna.
Howard Springsteen, Vienna Town Council.
Dave Snyder, Falls Church Vice Mayor.
I'm Phil Duncan, Falls Church.
Karen Oliver, Falls Church.
Gary Bethel.
Before we start, I'd just like to say thank you so much for offering, one, I think
it was nice that we ended up doing a dinner because it ended up getting us all together and you set an opportunity to share ideas. But thank you so much for hosting this. This is lovely. Thank you for the wonderful food. We really appreciate it and hopefully we shed some light on the Solarize program and programs in Falls Church and the town of Vienna. So thank you for having us. We really appreciate it.
I'd like to get to everyone in the audience, please feel free to join us. Do us a lot of the story.
Mayor Drago and Mayor Tarter, members of both councils. Chris is here making a great racket. He wants to tell a little bit of a story of a new program that we have in the city of Falls Church to try to divert waste from the landfill towards composting. And Chris McGough will talk about that in just a moment. And then after that, Bob will give us a briefing on the Solarize program and the progress that we've made, what we've been able to accomplish together in the region with that program. But Chris McGough is the head of all of our solid waste programs and our recycling program and recently joins us from Fairfax County. We're very glad to have him. But Chris, why don't you tell us the story of this program?
Absolutely. We may have been nudged by Vienna and Solarize, but we win in terms of food scrap composting. So last Saturday at the farmer's market, we unveiled a food waste collection station. And it's actually modeled after the city of Alexandria, but it was so popular. The idea is that we sell these little tubs for five bucks basically cost. And we let the residents collect food scraps at their house. And it sounds kind of crazy, but I'll tell you, we were three and four people deep at the little collection station from the beginning of the market to the end of the market. The excitement was just rewarding to be on the other side of that. So they collect food scraps at their house and then they bring it back to the market. So people that frequent the market find this to be a pretty convenient way to divert food waste from the trash. And then we collect it and then we ship it to Prince George's County, one of the few actual food waste composting facilities. Ten weeks later, it turns into a leaf grow that is bagged and sold. And you might have seen this product at Home Depot. So the environmental impact of that process is pretty amazing. It's just like the farmer's market. It turns waste into a very local product that is sold at five bucks a bag at the local retailer. So it's a pretty sweet program. We're really excited to jump in and the excitement is there. So to honor that, last Saturday, we are going to be composting tonight. So we have this white, special white trash can. It will go to the same facility and your participation is encouraged and I hope that you do. So the plates that are up here are also compostable. The cutlery, I'm not sure if the cutlery is not, but if you took one of these cups, it is compostable. So everything else pretty much can go join the rest of the food waste and be turned into a wonderful retail product in ten weeks. So it's a great program and I hope you swing by the farmer's market and check it out.
We have, as we mentioned, Libby Burke, who's part of the Community Enhancement Commission. Do you want to make some more for me?
We've got Chris's contact information. It's Steve. Park and other communities have a park service there. I'll compost right here.
Yeah.
You can.
Absolutely.
But I'd love to share.
Yeah, absolutely. Tacoma Park, I think Chevy Chase is, those are the only two in the region that are doing. And they're using the same Prince George's County facility. They have a lot of capacity at that facility at the moment, so it opens the door to a small community like us to look at a bigger step or a bigger solution. But I think it starts at the farmer's market. That was, the excitement was, you know, really, really there. So that's really cool.
Thank you much. Do we want to now hear about the Solarize program?
We will.
Mr. Lazaro, welcome.
Bob Lazaro will introduce himself. He probably needs no introduction. He'll tell us about Solarize.
Before we get started, we've also got Mark Gibb from Northern Virginia Regional Commission behind us. Maybe you could wave your hand. I think many of us are familiar with you and—
I'm getting ready to do my waste over here.
Okay.
Thank you, Wyatt. Madam and Mr. Mayor, my name is Bob Lazaro and I am Director of Energy and Regional Energy and Sustainability Policy for the Northern Virginia Regional Commission. And it's my pleasure just to give you a brief update on Solarize, where we've been, where we are, where are we going, and in terms of our general energy policy as well. And thank you, Mr. Mayor, for introducing my boss, Mr. Gibb. Without the support of the commission leadership, this wouldn't have happened. So I'm very grateful for all of that. First and foremost, thank you to all of you. This was a great community-wide effort, mayor and councils of the city and the town, the administration, the staff, and our local champs. And thank you to the Community Enhancement Committee in Vienna. Tara and Susan are not here. Here in the city as well, and Tim Stevens and his crew. It was a true grassroots effort in sharing information. And that's one of the things that make it very, very successful, is having local champs. I know Mr. Benton from the Falls Church News Press was here. Thanks to the local media because they did stories almost every other week, once a month, about Solarize. And it made a real difference in getting information out. In terms of signups, as you know, the town of Vienna won the signup challenge. In total, we had 709. And interestingly enough, only 243 people followed through on the home energy checkup. And it was consistent with our fall campaign as well. Only about a third of folks sign up for the campaign, for the home energy checkup. It's either life is too busy, they just don't respond to email and phone calls. But we do make, we did make the effort and we appreciate very much what you had done for us. In terms of contracts to date, the Solarize spring has 11 contracts, 75 kilowatts worth of power of the systems and the construction value. All total, the campaigns, 31 contracts, nearly a quarter megawatt of new solar PV installed in Northern Virginia, and nearly a million dollars in construction value. And we will exceed a million dollars. And just to give you some concept of how much this is, for the Northern Virginia piece, the fall and the spring, we've increased the amount of solar installed in Northern Virginia by more than eight percent as compared to the 2013 baseline and statewide by almost two and a half percent. And that's really great for us, but it goes to show you how much more we need to do in the Commonwealth of Virginia. But thank you again for this. And these were all local companies. These are folks who hire our friends and neighbors to do the work. We have, I understand, a 12th contract that is in the mail that will be for a 13-kilowatt system, fairly large, and we expect at least three or four more. So these campaigns top out around 16, 17 contracts each, but they're all in the right direction. And it's 16 or 17 more contracts than we had before. The environmental benefits of all the campaigns are as follows. On the left-hand side, solar, the annual amount of solar produced by these systems will be 270,000 kilowatts. The home energy checkups, 301 total for both campaigns, save 252,720 kilowatt hours a year. That means combined, they save nearly 400 metric tons of CO2 from being emitted into the atmosphere. And we heard a lot about that today with the president announcing the Clean Power Plant Plan. It's equivalent to 40,000 gallons of gasoline not being consumed and nearly 400,000 pounds of coal not being burned. So when you put it into perspective, these 31 systems have a very large environmental impact, as do the home energy checkups. So what's next for us? We need to complete the contracts signed. I know Councilwoman Snicki has a project being put on her house as we speak. We are going to complete the home energy checkups, which go through the middle of August. And we're getting ready to Solarize Alexandria and the town of Dumfries. And for our own energy program after Alexandria and Dumfries, with the uncertainty of the federal income tax credit going past December of next year, it's going to force consumers to make decisions. And we will be working with our partners at LEAP to see if we want to Solarize Northern Virginia one last time. So we may be coming back to you all as part of a one last regional effort to do this. At the commission level, we'll have our legislative program. Could a mandatory renewable portfolio standard happen in Virginia? Could be, so maybe this year. Status of wind power, what will the Clean Power Plant Plan do in Virginia? One of the things that we will need to work with the towns, counties, and cities in Northern Virginia is the state legislature approved a property assessed clean energy program for Virginia. It applies to commercial properties and to multifamily residential units. And it would allow an energy efficiency or renewable project to be financed through an assessment on that property. So it makes it attractive to some commercial and multifamily property owners to do this. And so it will require each city, town, and county to adopt an ordinance. And so there's going to be a lot of work to be done with that. And the state will be issuing guidelines as to what type of projects can be financed, and those will have to be taken into consideration. And last but not least, with our GIS folks, we're developing a solar map for the entire region. So you will be able to click on your house and we'll be able to tell you how much roof you have, how much roof is available for a solar system, how big of a system could be fit on that roof, and the electricity savings in terms of dollar value that a system that size can give you on your home. With that, a very brief update. Last but not least, a lot of people ask me about my house. So this is it. For the first six months of 2015, the system on my home has produced about 4,000 kilowatt hours of electricity. The blue line is what I purchased from Dominion last year. The orange line is what I have purchased this year from Dominion. And the pinkish line is what my solar system produced. So all in all, it's gone really well at home, and I know Councilwoman Snicki will be happy when her system is up and running. For us at the Lazaro house, only one, my wife and myself and a one college-aged child. The savings to date has been about $300. Doesn't include renewable energy credits that will be paid in August for our system. And July was a disaster because our air conditioning system malfunctioned, but I suspect August and September will be in very good shape as well. All in all, I expect to offset probably two-thirds of my electricity use on the system that we put in. So thank you very much again for your participation. It's been really well accepted and I use you all as a great example of communities working together to make a positive difference. And Alexandria and Dumfries have some really great models. I've taken samples of all your work and have given it to them so they understand what they can do to help promote this. So unless there are any questions, I'll leave it up to you all. You're welcome. Thank you.
Yeah, thank—
My pleasure.
Thanks. Great job. Is there any questions or anything for Mr. Lazaro?
Who went off?
I think we know the answer to that.
I told you, you should have done it on a per capita basis, but—
Tried. We tried.
We tried for this. Town of Vienna did a great job. Both communities did a great job. And I think it goes to show you how interested people are in this and the citizens, I mean, Tim Stevens and others in the city and your friends in Vienna, did a great job in getting the word out. Volunteers putting on door hangers. Tim was at the farmer's market several times on Saturday on his own time, sharing information. Council folks were very generous in sharing it on social media. The city and the town did a great job in communicating in official channels. And that's what it takes. And you can tell based upon that activity who invested in it and who didn't. And we're truly grateful for that and we appreciate it. And hopefully we'll be back to you in the early winter to say that we're doing it again. So thank you.
I have a quick question. I have friends that are now coming to me and saying, "Can I still get that?" Can they, can they go through the Alexandria or Dumfries program?
I would say yes.
You would say yes?
Yes. But you're close enough to Alexandria, I guess, to, closer to Alexandria than Vienna. But the program is closed and the program closes for, did they sign up for a home energy checkup?
No. They were like, "Is it over yet?" And I was like, "Yeah, sorry."
I know, like, when we were advertising this, because of our proximity to Alexandria, a number of people from Alexandria signed up.
Okay.
And were told we are going to be doing another program. I would just urge them to go to the website and sign up with their home address. They're still accepting. If you go to other localities—
Oh, okay.
—sign up and then we'll see how we can work with them. Angela, who was with the LEAP staff, has moved on to work for one of the solar installers. So we have new staff now involved at LEAP. But we want to make sure that we can work with them. And actually, the RFPs for the fall were submitted today. So we have Prospect Green Brilliance and another organization that have submitted bids. So hopefully they'll make a decision by the end of Friday and be able to get things up and running.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you and thank you for dinner. Appreciate it.
Okay, why don't we go on? Mr. Shields, do you want to introduce our next speaker?
I'd be happy to. Thank you, Mayor Tarter. And one thing I would just say, Tim Stevens did send a note saying that he could not join us for dinner and I would really wish that he could have been here. He was our citizen spark plug who donated so many hours of his time to help promote this. And I think when people are thinking about doing this program, hearing it from a neighbor just really makes a big difference. If I could, before we start the next part of the program, just introduce city staff that are here. And I'll start with the people who organized this event along with your town clerk. But Celeste Heath is the clerk of council here and Deputy Clerk Veronica Prince. And they made this dinner happy, happen, so thank you. And Mike Collins, our Director of Public Works. Mike oversees all of our facilities, including this room. And so when he heard we're having a huge meal in this room, he's here just basically to keep an eye on us. But glad you're here, Mike. And Jim Snyder is going to be our next speaker. And one of the thoughts that we had in speaking with the mayor and your mayor was just to try to help sort of facilitate a discussion between our two elected bodies. And so along with Pat, we would like to just present some information on work we're doing and with your town manager, Mercury Payton, who is a good friend of mine. And we're here to talk a little bit about economic development, some of the planning efforts that we have underway, compare notes, and spur discussion and maybe some information sharing about the good things that you're doing in Vienna that we can learn from and vice versa. So that's the intent of the next phase of the discussion. And we are mindful that folks might want to leave, you know, not stay here till midnight like we do with some of our council meetings. So we won't, we'll sort of go along in terms of presentations based on what both of our elected bodies would like. Mr. Snyder is our Director of Planning, and so he has some information to share with the groups.
Thank you, Wyatt. I'm very pleased to be here tonight with both councils. We, in doing planning here in Falls Church, have done a lot of looking at some of the good things done in Vienna and particularly the way we've handled the Washington Old Dominion Railroad Regional Park and your lovely Civic Plaza, Terrain Station, Historic Train Station, which has been preserved, not lost, and how that interacts with your two terrific streets, Church Street and Maple Avenue. I wanted to distribute, if I could, some things. One is a plan for planning. And then second is a, something our planning commission is looking at right now, and this is a master plan draft that we're working on to look at in the U of D. And I mention this because it is a street, we're calling it our greenest street, that actually connects our two localities. Unlike Route 7 or some other streets, this is in fact a place that does connect us. The city embarked on a plan for planning to look at its opportunity areas. These are commercial and industrial areas in the city and to do small area planning for them in an effort to provide better vision for what could happen in important parts of the city that were already planned and zoned for commercial use. And the one pager that we're passing around, the Plan for Planning, is, shows these areas that the city's been looking at. And with the help of council and our planning commission, we have had three of these areas, the Washington Street Corridor, North Washington, South Washington, and Downtown. Small area plans that we have done in-house have been approved and gone through our city council, planning commission, and citizenry with unanimous approval. And those are being used to help guide the development of these areas, provide a guide for citizens, developers, businesses, to how we'd like those areas to develop in the future. We are presently looking at Area 6, which is the West Broad Street Corridor, and the planning commission is actually having a hearing on that downstairs tonight. It'll be going to city council in the fall, following a walking tour, which the mayor will be leading along with other council members. The importance of this really is that we are trying to use these planning efforts as a way to enhance economic development and better commercial and other uses in the city for the residents, for the tax base. Presently, a lot of these areas are dated. The buildings are not worth as much as the land and they're not contributing in the way they should to the economic life of the city. And they're not providing the goods and services that a city like Falls Church needs and deserves. And so this has been a good process. We have done these smaller plans typically in about one year using in-house staff and of course, the boards and commissions of the city of Falls Church. We've also been looking at areas like the WNOD Railroad Regional Park. And the handout we have there has some ideas that we were talking about with the planning commission, including looking at ways to treat the park as a park. It's a hundred-foot wide right-of-way. It's not just a trail. It's not just a path. When it crosses a street, that you're really crossing the park for a hundred feet. And we have a number of streets that interrupt the park. And we found in looking at the park that we really didn't have many distinctive areas in the city anymore on the WNOD trail. And so the purpose of this master plan is to try to figure out what can we do to make it distinctive, useful, and attractive. City Vienna has done very nice things. You'll see in this draft plan that's being talked about, we have some plazas proposed. We've been working with the Nova Parks Group to do some preliminary design work. We have an idea of possibly recreating somewhere the original train station, West Falls Church, that used to exist and having a place then for bicyclists and pedestrians to have a place to get your bike fixed or pump your tire or get a drink of water or use a restroom or have a history and community room that could be used to help people passing through the WNOD trail to understand better and connect them with the city and its business areas. So we have looked at this as a great street. You know, the city's greenest street is the label of this. And we would like to learn some from other jurisdictions. Vienna, the gentleman preceded me, I gather, did a lot of work in Purcellville, which has done a beautiful job with its trail and the features along it. So those are some of the things we are working on. I was very pleased to find out that Patrick is your new planning director. I had met him at a couple of Virginia APA conferences and admired very much the work they did in Culpeper that he was responsible for and Davis Street, which is named a great street by APA, the renovation of the train station, really recreating a quality commercial and community area in a retail area that had been, it was a little tired and needed reinvestment. So very pleased to reconnect with him, find out he's your director of planning. He and I have chatted a number of times, but only at those conferences, not as local neighbors. Patrick, I know you may want to talk about some of the things you're doing.
Sure. Thank you, Jim. I've learned as much from Jim as he's learned from me. It's great when professionals can exchange ideas and our town and city are very much alike, have some of the same challenges in terms of redevelopment. In Vienna, our main issue is redevelopment along Maple Avenue. During my interview, which was only five months ago, I took the risk of stating the obvious, that even though it's a great town, great community, very obvious from the events and the people and some of the amenities in the town, it mostly looked like a strip commercial, '70s model, single-story, big parking lots from a passerby perspective. So that's your big challenge and they had already realized that and created what's During my interview, which was only five months ago, I took the risk of stating the obvious, that even though it's a great town, great community, very obvious from the events and the people, and some of the amenities in the town, it mostly looked like a strip commercial, '70s model, single-story, big parking lots, from a passerby perspective. So, so that's your big challenge, and they had already realized that, and created what's called a MAC, the Maple Avenue Corridor Plan, and incentivizes redevelopment in a more smart-growth, pedestrian-friendly way, that provides incentives in terms of density, height, and in exchange for doing some of the smart-growth planning and development that we're looking for. I think a picture's worth a thousand words, so I just pass this around. Kind of a model of what we're looking for. Unlike city of Falls Church, where you're looking at some buildings at, you know, eight to 12 stories, we're looking at a little lower scale, three to four maybe, but an eclectic mix of architecture. And this is an actual application that we had a couple years ago, that kind of reflects what we're looking for with the MAC redevelopment. So bring the buildings up close to the street, pedestrian access, active streets with sidewalk furniture, landscaping, seating outside at restaurants, and other amenities such as that. So that's it in a nutshell. We also have traffic problems along Maple Avenue. We're in the preliminary stages of looking at the possible use of roundabouts to maybe calm that traffic and keep it moving at the same time. You look at the data for roundabouts, it's pretty remarkable. So we're going to plug that into the model. We're having a transportation planner look at that right now. Just an idea at this point. But those are the kind of things we're exploring to make Vienna even better, and we're updating our comprehensive plan. And that's kind of our goal, is to look at what's great about Vienna, and make sure we keep it, and look what needs to be improved in Vienna, and make smart legislation to make it an effective change. So, got any questions for me? In a nutshell. Yes, sir?
Pat, you might, two things, our mini roundabout, you might want to share that we got 80% funding from that, is that right?
What's that?
We have 80% of that funded, is that right? We got a grant to fund the roundabout.
Are you getting a grant to fund the roundabout? Oh, the one we have, yes. We're building a small roundabout, not right on Maple, but just off of Maple on a side street. And we did get funding for that, and we're hoping that'll be a good model to see how they work and how effective they are, and how well they're received by the citizens and folks that travel the road.
May I just?
Yes, sir.
Tell me where I'm going to roundabout, if I'm in Vienna, if I'm coming down Maple. Where are you thinking that there will be?
We're looking at, right now, conceptually, we're looking at four, two that would be on each extreme, at East Street and Nutley, kind of a welcoming, definitive feature for the town, it kind of introduces the town. Because you don't know, really know where it starts or ends, except for some gateway signage that's somewhat minimal. And then two, one at Park Street, and then one at Lawyers, that'll frame the downtown, the Village Green, and the historic area, Church Street. So we thought that might distribute them pretty.
Not right-of-way width, do you have to pull that off? I mean, is that?
The corners, you would have to secure some right-of-way. And the notion is, with the MAC, if you want to develop those kind of densities and redevelop your property, you have to rezone, and we would secure the right-of-way at that time. So it's going to evolve over time, unless we want to be more aggressive and secure the right-of-way other means.
Just, just to address your question, we're actually, what we're doing right now is just a mini roundabout at Park and Locust. And we really stress it's a mini roundabout to see how that works.
Right.
And big fire trucks or school buses will actually go through it, they will not go around it.
That'll be this fall, I think, be completed.
So I've got a question or two for you. You mentioned, well, let me just ask you for starters, what is your desired streetscape? In other words, what's your sidewalk width, tree pits, lighting? I mean, what's kind of, what is your ideal as far as streetscape goes?
I think a transition of texture, color, and activity, basically, from the roadside into the building, whatever it is. And that includes street furniture, includes lighting, decorative lighting, brick or other structure, park sidewalks, and activities such as seating, open bars, those kind of things on the street. You want to, you want to create active streets that are just very lively and pedestrian-friendly, get the people downtown. The other beauty about the MAC concept is, the idea is commercial or office on the bottom floor, and then condominiums above. And that'll bring some more affordable housing, that's a relative turn in northern Virginia. But there are a lot of folks that, quite honestly, own a nice home, and their kids have gone, and they'd like to stay in Vienna, but they don't really want to stay in the big house. So they would love a nice condominium right on Main Street. So I think there's a need there that's unmet, that will be met with this as well.
And what's your setback, like your building setback approximately, from back a curb to face a building? What are you looking for as far as your setback?
What's the backup plan?
No, what's a setback? In other words, from back a curb to face a building, how far are you setting your buildings back?
Oh, 20 feet.
20 feet?
Yeah.
Okay.
20 feet gives you that opportunity for the curb, the landscaping, the lighting, the sidewalk.
So council, our council went from 14 feet to 20 feet about, what is it, about two years ago or so, on our major streets? And I'm curious, I was curious as to what your setback was. Looks like we're kind of on the same.
It can vary based upon how you develop the site. The standards are pretty detailed, but 20 feet is a general guideline.
You mentioned condos. Does the market, does the market want to build condos in Vienna?
From what I'm hearing, there's a huge market, yeah.
For condos, not apartments?
Well, apartments or condos, any kind of smaller unit that's affordable, and can be a transitional home for folks, you know, my age or older, that are at that point in their lives where they don't need the big house.
If I could redirect your attention to the conversation on streetscape, do you have, or are you evolving treatment of bicycles, bicycle racks, and where are you with respect to parking regulations?
For bikes? Obviously, we have the trail resource going right through the town, which is a great resource for all of us. Takes you all the way from Purcellville through Leesburg, Herndon, Vienna, Falls Church, all the way to Alexandria. It's a great resource. And we've, we've created as many linkages to that as we can. We've also encouraged developers to put bike racks in. I don't think it's in our ordinance right now, so that, one of the changes we're going to make in updating our ordinance is to require that, to encourage the bike racks.
Vice Mayor Snyder?
So here's a, I'm sorry, go ahead. Will you, no.
There is bicycle parking offered. There's a port there, there's bicycle.
So I'm struck, as I, I was just in Vienna over the weekend, and I was struck by similarities between our two communities. That is, well-known communities with an established sense of community, very good schools, very good community services, good reputations, connected by the WNOD trail, also with major highways going right through the middle, so we're not sort of just off the highways. We have this condition to contend with, which is both positive and a negative. And one final thing, we're both on the doorstep of Tyson's Corner. So what's struck me about the importance of this meeting is, we probably ought to have a lot more of these, and maybe other communities like McLean that have similar situations. So my question is, have you all thought about Tysons? Is it an opportunity? Is it a challenge? How do we collectively, as communities on either side of Tyson's Corner, understand what will be in the future, and make that starting today, really? So my question is sort of a general one, and then maybe that'll help us go from where we are. But that is a common element, that it seems to me, it's always been there, at least in recent memory, but it's going to offer both challenges and huge opportunities in the future. So I was wondering if you've done any thinking about that?
Did you want to?
No, I was going to just add, there is a group called Greater Tyson Citizens Association. Have you all acknowledged that at all? And that was a group that was formed prior to the supervisors approving the comp plan for Tysons. And it was there as trying to provide input in the process, and involved the previous mayor, or myself, and other councilmen who were prior, was on it, as well as citizens from the Planned Citizen Association. So that might be something that you all, I'd be happy to take you all as guests and selected officials. And they had, over the last six months, we've had different people come in from the parks, from transportation, from the schools, come and talk about what are, what's planned as part of the comp plan, what's happening there, and then what some of the redevelopment projects are that are happening within Tysons. And I concur with you that there are certainly some challenges, lots of challenges involved in that process, and I think things where we have to hopefully have some input, and then there are some opportunities. Because obviously, that will be an urban center in the next 10, 20 years.
I guess the question, the challenge, which I've been thinking about more and more, is how do you maintain yourself, ourselves financially? And I know we have a little bit different circumstances, because we have to, we literally have to survive with what we can do in our two square miles. So your circumstances are a little bit different, but they're parallel in a lot of other ways. So how do you both maintain yourselves, ourselves financially, maintain our differences? Because I think the differences are what are, in my view, our future really lies. It's not to try to become a mini Tysons. It's like to maintain our uniqueness. And in that challenge, sort of what thinking have you done? And do you think there's some value in us maintaining a dialogue that's far more intensive than we've ever done before, because of similarities that go really much further than I initially thought?
I guess I would say that we need to encourage Tysons to continue with what's in their comprehensive plan and not hold back. Because there's a lot of things in there that are for their community development, recreation, transportation, things like that, that if they don't implement it correctly, I think will be an adverse problem for us.
And for you, and for all the surrounding neighborhoods. Since they won't have the services, or the community services in Tysons, they'll be spilling over into the communities that then have them.
Because they're really, their directive line is through the Board of Supervisors, who has tons of other things on their, on their plate. And so, so what's going to happen is, if we don't, if we're not careful, those services are going to start falling on the towns and cities that surround them, and the McLean Citizens Association. So I think, I think something paramount is to make sure that their lofty ideals are actually implemented.
And that's part of what the Greater Tyson Citizens Association is to do.
A lot of ways, as a city, I think you're in a much better position than we are as a town, like we're incorporated in the county, because we're part of Fairfax County. We have Fairfax County schools, and Fairfax County libraries, fire department, and if there's to be spill over, it spills over into our community. Whereas you're a city, and you control, you don't have to take students from Tyson's schools, or local city schools. But our community schools, county schools, have those students. I think it's ironic, they're calling Tysons America's Next Great City, no parks, no schools. I don't know what kind of city that is, but it's a little ironic. I think, Carrie, they need to stick with their original plans and develop their own community. I think they'll be better off in the long run, too.
Just to follow, Easie said, the Nineveh Fund Gorilla is, they don't have any schools there, and this became a major pushback from all the high schools, because they want to push students into Madison, or to McLean, to Langley, or to Marshall, and it's a real problem.
They said their plan is not to build their own high schools, but to build all the other.
Well, and that's based on the demographics that they, yeah, that's based on the demographics that they have. They have an elementary school, right, and not a high school. But that's going to have to be, you know, over time. But I think Tysons partnership meetings also have kind of shown us that they're looking, they're trying, the property owners realize that they need to create a sense of place and community in Tysons, and so they're starting to try to do that. The big push will be whether the infrastructure is put in, and the services. But I think they realize, even that there's, they're putting a fair amount of bike lanes, believe it or not, into Tysons, which I just never thought would be really happening. So, you know, that being said, if you all are interested in coming to some of the Greater Tyson Citizens Association meetings, myself and Lynda Colbert is the representative for our town council. But you can hear what's going on, and certainly, as a neighbor, be aware of, you know, how things are progressing with the redevelopment.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask you, are you all considering bike share for your community?
We have not considered that, as, we've heard a lot about it, actually, at BML. I don't know if you've seen that at some of the Virginia Municipal League meetings, they've had information about that. But at this point in time, we have not talked about that as a council note.
I'd like to say that the Vienna Business Association is wanting to capitalize on using the bike trail as, as looking at that as a potential economic generator of people having some sort of way, like a gateway, to know what's going on in the town or the city. And so, I know that you have a business, the Falls Church Business, or Business Chamber of Commerce, that, that might want to get together with the, I know that they have a really nice partnership together already, but maybe look at combining forces somehow there, because, because there's a lot of, I think, economic generation that could be from the trail by offering businesses that are right around the trail. So that, that ride share would be the way to do that.
Arlington, I think, is probably going to roll out bike share to the East Falls Church Metro, and there's been discussion in Falls Church about the possibility of trying to roll that into the city. But it seems to me like Vienna might be a next stop along the way. And the plan, the program basically is, you get a membership, and you can borrow a bike for a period of time to maybe take a quick trip into the city to go to the farmer's market, or to a grocery store, and then return it on your way back.
And also Reston, too, because that's the next one.
Yeah.
Other side of us. So, yeah, I think, I think it would be great.
The question I wanted to ask earlier, even the bicycle trail, I know the history is, you have a ramp over your seven. How, how did you fund that? How much effort was that?
I have to say, I can't speak directly to that, if our city manager, Mr. Shields, can you speak to the funding for the bridge over Route 7?
That was funded, I think, and actually, Mr. Snyder may know, actually, you may be the best expert on that. It was, it was built before I was here with the city.
Right, but it, I don't recall the funding. We can get some information. I know the Park Authority probably was involved, there was a citizens group supporting it. I don't know the extent to which they got federal or state money, but it may come as a total shock that it was actually controversial.
Hugely. I'm sure.
So shy.
The design of it, or the implementation?
Yes.
And the cost?
Yes, of course.
Do you all get a lot of business from bikers? I mean, it seems logical, and I've ridden out plenty of the Whole Foods in your locality. I'm just curious, the amount of commercial activity that comes from the bike trail, basically bicycling, your commercial.
I don't know the answer to that. You know, I really don't know the answer to it. I do know that the trail is a well-used trail. I know, and I'm sure there's people who stop, like you said, Whole Foods along the town, you know, stop along Church Street. But I don't have, we haven't had a way to measure that, I don't think. Mercury, do you, yeah, I don't, we haven't had any measurements of that at this point in time. Go ahead, Carrie.
Well, we have two bike shops on either side.
We do.
Now, now that we have the Caboose Brewery, there's a lot of stops.
More stops, you mean?
Yes, a lot of stops. They have more bike racks than any business in town, so.
Do you all have a plan, any sort of bike plan, you know, in terms of how we're going to use? to use the trail to pull people into your business districts, things like that?
We, we have not talked about it in just the essence of bringing in to businesses. We've talked about it in the, looking at the town and saying how we want to be bike-friendly and allow the opportunity for residents to provide access for residents to our commercial areas, our community center, our municipal buildings, and our parks, and our schools. Those have been kind of our big focus. So that's, we're looking at it in that way, that's how we're looking at it. We have a master bike plan, and it's looking at it in that context.
So, is it planned new, or have you had it for a while?
Planned new, and they're still working on parts.
So what is the essence? I mean, you're going to bike lanes, you're going to add more bike lanes to the city?
There's not, I know, you all might have a bit wider streets. We are not able to probably put lanes in many streets, but mostly we're looking at routes, bike routes along the way. We're just redoing a roadfall lane, and we're putting in a bike route there. We talked about putting in a bike lane, but it's a bike route inside. And usually, we have striping along with it that kind of, you know, works to provide a little bit of a buffer for bicyclists. We have a route along Courthouse that goes kind of down. We were still talking about how, the other thing, so I'm sorry, I'm kind of getting off track here, but you know with the I-66 widening, that they are looking at trying to continue a bike lane some way inside the Beltway. And so that would somehow connect down to the W-10 trailer within, into Falls Church. And so, we were talking about where can that go in the town, because we don't have a lot of space right within that wall, because it's bordering a bunch of residents and parks. So, that's going to be something that's going to be, we're going to be looking at in the future, as to where can we get a bike lane, or designated area, or trail to go, you know, kind of go through town from the west down east, kind of along I-666. Still a work in progress.
Let me ask you about Church Street, and that's kind of your festival street, right? Did you guys make a concerted effort to do that, or it just sort of randomly happened?
Yeah. Yeah, I think that, there was a redevelopment, as we, Patrick talked about the MAC. There was a same, a similar plan for Church Street. Church Street was kind of getting somewhat dilapidated, and was looking tired and run down. And so, there was a plan, I think it was in the late 90s, so before myself and many of the members on council. And they put a, a plan together to change Church Street. Kind of like, it's a vision for Church Street, just like we did a vision for Maple Avenue. And over the last 15-plus years, it's been, you know, 20 years has been redeveloped. So that's how it started with a vision, and then changing up the ordinance, the zoning in that area, and then time. And hopefully, investors that are willing to, want to have it, you know, come to execution.
Did you all invest city, or town money in it as well?
No.
Actually.
For the town, oh, sorry, for the town green that was invested, if I can imagine.
For Church Street?
Church Street was a county project, Fairfax County bonds, 1980, colonization bond. It was sold all up in the.
Yeah. Maple Avenue.
That was us, Maple Avenue, it was the town.
Actually, Congressman Davis earmarked a lot of money for that. Which has gone away, that earmarking.
That's, that was for the sidewalks and things like that.
Some of it was ordinance, because the Church Street, Maple Avenue, the MAC district, a reason after applying for it in their condition. But the Church Street was a Ula A, so it became alternative, so they opted to, wanted to process for it, that was a procedure, if you, guidelines for building the building, signage, and that kind of thing. They had several property owners coming under that. Also, restaurants, eating establishments were not allowed on Church Street until the church division. So I think that's part of where the town of Vienna has seen where people want certain things, and so we're trying to accommodate and market. For example, recently, we have quite a few applications, and for some, we don't know why, it's lost in the midst of time. But an outdoor eating, like patio restaurant, has to go through and get a conditional use permit, and our board of commissioners has to, planning commissioner of board of zoning deals, public hearings, and we don't know why it came, why was that process adopted? We don't know, but it's there. As the BCA members came and said, you know, we really don't feel qualified, and there's no reason for us. And we looked at it and said, you know, these are the things people want, and that's what we want. We don't need it to be that hard. So we're looking at now, and Patrick is working on bringing it to us in the fall, changing our ordinance, so that it becomes part of just the cycle, process. You know, the architect will, does it call. But it's mostly a staff process, and it's not the public hearings. We're really making it up for it.
One of the things, same as you folks, one of our aces of the whole financial is, we have the 3% meals tax, which the county doesn't have. If you have a city, and that, that's how we fund all our capital projects.
Do you all use your tax as part of your general, general fund, or do you use it in a different way?
No, general fund.
Okay, so that goes just into your general.
Could I ask, those of us who've been here a while, my impression driving through Vienna now, is, is just, the residential neighborhoods are undergoing an incredible transformation almost as you watch. I mean, the time it takes to get to Outback Steakhouse and get back home, I feel like another, another three houses have been torn down along that stretch. I mean, how is that, we've had a lot of that here, and it causes a certain amount of distress. How is that manifesting itself in your development, in your politics? I mean, there are some enormous houses being built in Vienna, where there were fairly modest houses before.
I think we still stick to the 25% law. That's kind of a hard to grasp rule. And I will say that this summer especially, I don't know if it's because we have more local citizens, or we have multiple houses going up on, on the same street, where, you know, while there were a lot before, you know, onesies, twosies here and there, we have a tremendous amount of citizen complaints about going on in the neighborhood. Boys ordinance violations, trash.
Maintenance of site during construction. I mean, we have a little, Wyatt and I, you know, exchanged emails earlier about one site here. And as I drive through Vienna, it's like a target-rich environment for people to be extremely unhappy about.
You have a lot of, over, over, that is not, really don't like, see, and that's just kind of hard, you know, we want to work with them and make them feel like it's still being, but, you know, they get a little upset when there's this huge housing, they're living in the ramble. But after, when we meet with the builders, we can meet with the builders, and we can have a little chat with them, and just encourage them to, you know, if their workers have lunch, please be up out there, so, don't block the highway, they just have a reminder.
That'd be interesting. Actually, if you deal with task force, you know, I think we might have some, we maybe have some things we could share, and also maybe some things we could learn, because that's, that happens here.
We all know the rules, I think, of like the, but some of them may not know.
I don't know, they do, they're contractors.
The actual workers.
Right, the actual.
They may not know what they're, you know, doing.
So, one of the things I noticed today, and I raised with our account manager on the, is that, we've been, Nora's, she struck before seven o'clock. If I said, if I go to work, if I see three or four violations, someone's not doing their job. And they, they push the envelope. And, you know, my feeling is, you start before seven, you're fine.
Okay. We've also done some things that citizens have complained about, dirt skirts, where people build up their property by six feet in order to get a walk-in basement, which really makes your, your rambler look dwarfed.
Like a doghouse.
And so, we've done some, we've done some things with our ordinance, based on complaints about water runoff, and, and things like that, to, to help alleviate some of those, those big impressions that, that a house next to you can make. So, so that's another way that we also listen to citizens' concerns, when there's, when there are issues, and, and change things accordingly.
Let me ask you about your major streets running through, you know, the major thoroughfares. Do you have any thought of, for example, on-street parking, or anything like that, to try? Have you had any discussions about that, or?
No.
Interesting you raise that. If you go down Maple Avenue from Nutley to lawyers, we have no singles in. Our probably works director has been very good, came from Arland County. We have a mid, mid-block pedestrian crosswalk that has just taken off in success, that three major flashing lights, and people now can cross. And you have a lot more intersections here in Falls Church, but, you know, I'm, I'm really pleasantly surprised how effective it has become. Otherwise, they would just dart, it's by the post office, they would just dart across the street.
Well, I mean, we have major.
That's not, right, that's not helped necessarily with on-street parking, but that allows people to perhaps park and then go across, you know.
Okay. Well, we're trying to figure out, I think, as a city, ways to slow down traffic, make it more livable scale, promote outdoor seating, but having a truck, you know, barreled down at 50 miles an hour isn't really conducive to people want to hang out and linger. And so, a lot of different ideas kind of batted around about how to do that.
Sure, certainly, right, is that buffer.
Yeah.
You see in a lot of areas, yeah. I mean, that's, the wider sidewalk is also the buffer, because having the wider sidewalk allows them to plantings up and things like that, to kind of make it, so if you have outdoor seating on the sidewalk or on the area, it provides some room for that.
Do you have a concept of downtown Vienna? I mean, like, creating a place, my, my impression of Vienna is, it's sort of the same all the way, from the beginning to the middle to the end, if you're going through Maple. Is there a concept that, you know, you build it up to the center somewhere, so that there's, I mean, this is, this is cute, you know, but this, this ain't paying the bills, you know? This is, involves church at least, this is not intensively developed enough to generate the money we need to run our schools, basically. And, and so, we're trying to.
You're saying density laws?
We, I mean, we are trying to become more dense in certain places, where the developer community brings us density. And, and some people like that, some people don't like it. I mean, are you all feeling that? Does any developer coming to you and saying, yeah, we'd like to build aid stories, we'd like to create a downtown Vienna?
Moving from 35 feet to what that MAC ordinance is, which is 54 feet, was.
Ten, ten years.
Limbs, limbs were lost, huh?
So I don't see us raising the roof anytime soon on our commercial area.
But I think you are right.
Yes.
Because the Urban Land Institute came and did an assessment of Maple Avenue, and exactly, that was their suggestion.
Yes, that's right.
In order to make it economically feasible for developers. And I, I think you are correct, but I think our citizens would be up, up in arms over that one, so.
Yeah, but you're, you are exactly right, because the Urban Land Institute said, make it higher, allow more height.
So do you think your, your higher height limits, higher densities have encouraged, because I saw that there's quite a bit of construction happening, I came in, and, you know, this unfortunately went away with the downturn a few years ago, and we haven't had, we adopted our ordinance, but we haven't had any applications. And we keep hoping it's because nobody wants to be forced in that process, but it may also be that they're just not interested, you know, that, that higher height limits and the aid stories are necessary.
This is the mayor's line of work, so I defer to him. I would, I would say without, if we had the same kind of limits that you have, we just, nothing would happen here. Nothing at all. I mean, we would be, become like an antique, you know, place.
The difficulty here is that we get one level of commercial, and then the rest residential. And when you're funding the schools purely out of what you raise locally, you better get it right, or you have a very modest short-term gain, and you've created a long-term economic burden. So, I would, it's safe to say that the development model we're seeing here is some like it, and some don't. But one thing that I, that I would say is that you got to negotiate really hard to get the commercial that you want, because they, we found, they'll build all the residential units you can possibly allow them.
It's true here, at least. I don't know, I mean, the schools are the driver here. I don't know, the schools are good, where you are, of course, but, I don't know, it's such a driver here. So I ask about condos opposed to apartments, because actually, the smaller units don't throw off that many kids, and the smaller condos throw off even fewer kids. So, the market wants, Dave's right, the market would build, every project has 350 apartments. That's just, that's the opening bid. And we, you know, can you make it 250? Can you make, you know, that's what we go around with. Now, can we make it condos instead of apartments? But, you know, the answer up to now has been, that's hard for us to do, because, you know, we think we can rent these apartments to millennials, and people who do want to downsize, and so forth, and we don't think we can sell condos to these people.
Rental markets. What is the, you know, you see a lot more apartments, in Tysons, they're all apartments now, they're not condominiums. What is the market for condominiums? Is that changing at all? Are you going to see a lot more apartments?
I don't know, it's hard to say. You know, the market is a pendulum, you know, 10 years from now, it may be commercial, or maybe some other market use. And so, I think you just sort of need to plan for the long term, is that the market's going to swing one way, and it's going to swing back the other, and make sure, you know, you got a little bit of this, and a little bit of that, because you want your community to be balanced in the long run. I would suggest talking to developers in your community as well, I mean, the people who aren't doing anything, or you need ordinance, and saying, what do you need? You know, and there are sweet spots for development in terms of construction, like certain heights, or kind of maximize efficiencies. If you want to go a little higher than that, it actually is less efficient, you know, like concrete construction is more expensive, and so, people want to just stop when you can stop building, stick build. That's not really your issue, because you're below that height, but there are things like that to consider. People want to run an apartment or a hotel, they want to have a certain amount of units, where it's not efficient to run it. And so, I would suggest talking to the people who may be doing business in your jurisdiction, and say, what would it take? You know, first, you need to have a vision of what you want. You know, at the end of the day, what is it you guys, what would your ideal, you know, Maple Avenue, Maple Street look like? What would the mix of uses be? And I would suggest talking to some of the folks who might be doing that, and asking them, what will it take for you to participate in the marketplace, and see if that's something that would work for you. But it's challenging, we go through, and we don't have a unity of opinions here in the city, but we kind of try to do the best we can. But it, it's pretty challenging, so.
But I think you guys have the, I mean, you guys have a tool. So, I mean, you are your own, sort of, bar of the city, so you have to fund your schools with whatever, you know, we, we don't necessarily have that, so we get a lot of pushback. You know, we would get a lot of pushback from residents, because we're part of Fairfax County School. So other than, you know, maybe some more service things, or some more green space that would come, some redevelopment, you know, open stuff up, that's pretty much we would, we would have to offer, or what, you know, we kind of. So, I mean, you guys kind of have that in your pocket, to say, well.
It's kind of a blessing and a curse to some people, because that attracts, you know, all the residential, that kind of distorts that. But I think you guys have a great quality of life, and I think it's something you can really offer, is a really neat community, I think maybe a little bit like Falls Church. So, I know, it looks like Mr. Snyder probably has something he wants to say, and I thought I'd let him go.
Just in terms of condominiums, you know, the condominium market really got hurt by the downturn, and there were so many big projects that failed, and they've been, some of those turned into rentals. What I've been hearing is that it's a, condominiums that will be built, right now, you're seeing some of them in the best locations downtown. And then, in other areas, they're going to be much smaller, many fewer units. And it takes a smaller builder and a smaller piece of property to be able to do that, 50 to 100 units, maybe 150 units, that some of these big, big projects, you know, they failed because they, you know, they were too big. And so, I think it's, I think that market is still, you know, it's being talked about, but there's not much being actually proposed. So it's still got a way to go, and I think you'll see smaller-scale numbers until it gets more robust.
You were talking about millennials. Are you doing anything actively to attract millennials? Because I know in, in like DC, they are actively recruiting millennials, as is Tyson's corner. Because I know in, in like DC, they are actively recruiting millennials, as is Tyson's Corner. Is that something that you find appealing, or is that something that you're trying to attract, or not really?
Well, I would just say, I think there's a desire to have a broad community, not just sort of a sweet spot of people. I think our demographics tend to be skewed towards people with school-aged children, and kind of a little before and a little bit after, and so, I think we're missing probably some older folks and some younger folks. And so, I think many of us would like to broaden our community to have kind of a full range of demographics, of ages and income levels and the like. And so, I think that's part of what we consider whenever a new multifamily project comes in is, you know, what are your unit sizes? What kind of people do that attract? Was that missing element from our city? And so, we have discussions about, you know, senior housing, would that be appropriate for the city? And if so, and, you know, what size and configuration, and millennials, and just kind of the whole gamut of folks. We have a very strong single-family community with a lot of schoolkids, it's a great place for that demographic, but I think there are many of us who'd like to see kind of a broader range. And so, I think that's done primarily through, some are planning efforts in terms of what we want to see in the long term, and then the actual design of individual buildings that are proposed of what size and configuration of units, what's the unit mix, does it ski one way or the other? So, maybe others could address that as well, but I think that's, in general, what we have done, but there's plenty of discussion about that.
Do developers require the developers to provide...
6%, 6% are supposed to be ADUs, 60% of area meeting net comp. But that's, that's, that's what we want. It's hard to get that, because that costs serious money.
Fairfax County does 6%, 8% are ADUs, but they're like, their projects are 110%, so they're a lot easier to...
And we end up having, like the Harris Teeter building, it's got ADUs, but they're 80, 90, and 100%. Affordable housing community wants those numbers to be what we say our policy is, which is...
That's a good one.
It's hard, we're, you know, we're, we're going to lose what affordable we have at a rate faster than we are going to replace, even if we built, you know, three new buildings, Harris Teeter-sized, every other year, just not going to be able to keep pace with it. Because the ones that, the older garden apartments are going to go offline and be renovated, and then they'll become unaffordable. And on millennials, I'm amazed, because I have two millennials, but, I mean, they have someplace to live and they have something to do. And they, they...
That's for you.
That's, I think we're, we're making progress here in the city on, at least, as I listen to my millennials, you know, like, oh, God, this place was such a dead... But now, there's all sorts of, well, once they can, once they can, you know, yes, sorry. Well, you know, I mean, it's a culture, I mean, there are a lot of places that we've opened in the, in the ground floors of these newer buildings, Mad Fox and others that are, you know, they're popular gathering places where young people go, they just want to sit outside and, you know, do what they do.
Down here where Applebee's is, they've got a great bar here, wild music.
Ah, you go, man.
Oh, yeah. I was doing that.
You and I should talk, yeah. That's where Les and I celebrated getting our, buying our house 30 years ago. You must have been 15 then. Anyway, yeah, so, and a place to live is, is important, and that's why the smaller units, I mean, right now, my daughter would love to be able to afford a one-bedroom apartment, but, you know, that's 1,800, 2,000 bucks. And so, that's, you know, we got to build a whole lot more smaller units to be able to. But we are hearing though, that it's become so unaffordable along the corridor that people are moving out from Courthouse and Boston into Falls Church, because we are a little bit more affordable.
The Washington Post article about where the millennials want to live, talked about millennials that were having kids and couldn't find anything they could afford in DC and moving all the way out to Falls Church.
I know, yes. Out to the boonies.
I did meet, too, we had a great event, we talked about bicycles, Vienna Elementary School had a big bicycle riding day, and they had 400 eligible kids and 279 of them actually rode bikes that day, and then another 110 parents and siblings. But I met two young mothers, both with strollers and then older kids who were there. Both of them had moved, didn't know what happened before, but had moved from Arlington to Vienna, because they had kids and they wanted a more family-friendly with the house. And they said Vienna compared very...
Interesting.
I was impressed.
Here you hear some people, you know, we used to live in Delray, we used to live in Sherlington, and moved out here because of the schools. We didn't move here because it's extremely walkable in the sense that Delray or Sherlington was, and, and those people will say, you know, and once the kids are out of school, we're out of here, because this is not the kind of place that we, and we, it's too suburban. If you transform, evolve into a community that has more walkable amenities, then maybe we'll stick around. That's, that's the, that's one voice, it's not the only voice, but that's a voice that you hear now that's new to me. I mean, that's, when I moved here, I assumed we would have the kids and we'd stay here. A lot of people, I think, are moving here now for the kids and the schools, but they do want a more walkable environment.
And I was thinking about what you were saying earlier about putting the mid-block crossing in, and, and every once in a while, I like the idea of, could we ever put parking on Route 7, which people say, oh, but you've got so much traffic, how could you do it? And my idea is, there are places where you just, your, your goal is not really to push people through, your goal is to get people to stop.
Slow people down.
And slow them down, and, and those are things that you can do, the mid-block crossings and, and quite frankly, if you put parking on that big street, then people won't drive through the center unless they absolutely have to or want to stop.
They don't have to do that in Vienna though, because they've got, they've...
I mean, traffic's already slow.
I know, you've already... You have the functional, you have the functional workload of on-street parking most of the time through Vienna.
We don't have any way really to find...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anytime people say that traffic is bad here, I just tell them, you know, we've been out to Vienna on a Saturday.
Or does it, I don't, I, you can't move down that.
It's just, I mean, it's a very popular place to be, and you got to drive, most of the things you have to drive to.
We don't want to let them take, you know, if you put side, if you put parking and slow people down, people aren't going to be able to find all the other side of the street.
We know it, yeah. My wife knows all this, because she grew up here.
We know how to give people stories, too, voidery 7.
It's like a secret that you guys don't tell anybody. That's true though, that's...
It's too crowded.
Yeah, exactly.
I still use the same backroads around that I, that I, we're telling them, five blocks in Vienna, and they like would shut down the left, and I'm like, seems to just find a couple places, 10 years later.
I can't recall whether we had anything else on the agenda, but I don't have an agenda handy. I don't know if there's more things to be said, or people want to sort of start winding things down. I think this has been a great first step of us getting together and starting to reach out, and I think there's a lot of things of common interest, and we can learn from each other. I think we're all sort of thinking about the same things, sometimes maybe in different ways, but I think complementary ways, but I think we could probably learn a lot from each other, and I hope maybe we can do this again another time. But I wanted to thank you all for coming out, it's been a pleasure to host.
Yeah, go to Vienna, yeah. I've never been, I'm embarrassed. We go to, we go to Outback quite often. If we could ever get an Outback here in Falls Church, I'd never go to Vienna.
So, I just want to point out, before we go, the locker room, Katie's little, this is Peggy James's dad's restaurant.
Oh, that's the place.
Oh, did you know that?
It's not quite as good as Mount Jack's, Mount Jack's, right? But it's, it's a good local.
It was one of its here in...
Yeah. The whole chain went away, I think.
Thank you.
We used to go there.
So, one minor question.
Share.
On the trail that goes through our communities, we get complaints that bicycle riders are just flying through into the real safety, do you have a similar complaint here, and have you addressed it?
We, we do, and we've had those discussions about how do you, you know, protect pedestrians. We've had a couple incidents where pedestrians get clocked pretty good, and so, it is a challenge. I'm not sure we have, and the police have been out, I think, at times. Mr. Shields, you probably can speak to this, enforcing some of the, the laws. I think it's been a little while since we've had a police presence on the trail enforcing, you know, some of the stopping restrictions and speed issues, things like that. But we have done enforcement in the past, have we not?
We have, and I, I think we, we still do it. And, you know, bike, cyclists like to keep their momentum through stop signs is the...
Gracefully put. And, but we've had accidents, and, and, and so, the police are out there.
I don't, I don't think they, it's a high volume of enforcement, but they, they try to have a presence out there.
It's certainly a problem, though, I think, in the city for any community with a bike trail running through it, I'd say people just fly through it. So, anyway, again, thank you so much for coming out, and we really enjoyed getting together.
And I look forward to doing it again.
Yeah, it'd be great. Thanks so much, and if you guys want to take some leftovers, take them home, enjoy.
I actually have this notion of the...